One, two, three, say scholarship. One, two, three.
Scholarship.
All right. Thank you for coming.
All right. Thank you, Councilwoman Thomas, for your efforts and keep the vision for our young people before we sit down. Now, on our agenda, we have citizens' requests. We have two citizens on the agenda tonight, four citizens' requests. We're just going to remind both citizens, you'll have three to five minutes. At five minute mark, I will set time. And so please remember that not personal, but we have an aggressive agenda tonight. We have many items that we have to go through.
In 2016, I had the same concern about the lack of community and recreation opportunities available in that part of the city. The mission saw the importance of providing that type of opportunity that had been available at the Brown Wyandotte. We even investigated the possibility of rehabilitating the Brown Wyandotte building at the time, investing our own resources to complete due diligence with a variety of experts, the findings of whom you have all been given copies of. Unfortunately, our investigation determined that the building could not be made safe for a cost-effective investment when compared with building a new facility. But the missions remained committed to providing a space for the people on that side of Broad Street, so committed in fact that we tore down our administrative offices and constructed a $4.2 million state-of-the-art facility less than 118 feet from the Brown Wyandotte building. As a point of reference, that's the same distance as City Hall's front door to City Hall's fountain. The Dr. Michael and Catherine Bullock Community and Recreation Center has been a huge success. Over 1,800 citizens have become members and over 200 individuals come through the center each day to take part in the Athletics for All Ages Fellowship, Bible study, fine arts, fine art classes, fitness, academic support, and much more. All the programs at the Bullock Center and through the missions are 100% free of charge. The Bullock Center was recognized as such a fantastic investment by so many that this body even voted to give a portion of a lodging fee to the missions to help run the center in 2020. A vote the missions was very appreciative of, although the missions has not received any of those monies as a result of this vote. We are always appreciative of the local support of the city. As the Bullock Center's programs have expanded, we are constantly looking for ways to innovate and better serve our community. One need we have is outdoor space for athletics, outdoor instructional, fine art recitals, community festivals, and more. As we surveyed our campus, we began having conversations with other leaders in our community regarding the possibility of taking the dilapidated Brown Wyandotte building and demolishing it and securing it and using it, using the funds to reinvest.
President, Councilwoman Carrion, Councilwoman Christian Thomas, Councilwoman Carmichael, Councilwoman Lisa James, Councilwoman Sarah Randolph, Councilman Jonathan, Councilwoman Jamie Thomas, and Councilwoman Michael Johnson. Thank you so much for those council members that have responded to Roll Call. Now, tonight we're just gonna make a small deviation in our work session agenda. We had our announcements first today because we have someone here that has to leave us. But we want to go in and make our announcements first and at this time I'm gonna turn it over to Councilwoman Jamie Thomas to make a very important announcement. Councilwoman Jamie Thomas.
I wanna do this, this is, we just opened this at our, at our talk about the grant came in on us and we had a young lady that did an essay on nonviolence and she didn't, we didn't get her scholarship award. So, this is, Mrs. Ms. Walker is Alexis Hannah's mother that we are giving this award, scholarship award out to. And this is Adriana Powers' mother. And Adriana should be here, but she says she has to go be working at 6:30. And I hate that, I'm gonna go ahead and give this a little prolonged time. I wanna make sure that she gives this. Your daughter Adriana did an excellent essay and we want to award her with her scholarship for award set. And we do this in the honor of our resident to show that our charity that we need to continue to do our stuff and all that happen. We want our young people to know how important it is. So as the mother, I'm gonna give you the places to be and Adriana come, I would like for her to have. Also, we have another one that we would like to give to another young lady that was awarded last year that goes to Auburn, she goes to Auburn University. Sometimes, somehow that when we do things, we believe in doing things the right way. This young lady is because of the city fund that she did not receive her, her money that we gave to her. So we are going to award this to Jackie McCollum's daughter. She was our last year scholarship winner and the check was never printed to her. So we want to reward this to her. And the mother should be here later. So, Mr. President, I just wanna give this to those young people that are in college and we will support them under the Adriana Alexis Alexis Hannah Scholarship. And this is Alexis Hannah's mother.
Let's do our scholarship. And also thank you for keeping Ms. Walker's president alive of this scholarship.
Please don't forget.
Okay.
This is our lady, this is our angel, this young lady, 12th grade, graduate from Salem High. The lives of women.
One, two, three, say scholarship. One, two, three.
Scholarship. All right, thank you for coming. I'm happy to help.
All right, thank you, Councilwoman Thomas, for your efforts and keep the best hope for our young people before 6:00. Now, on our agenda, we have citizens' requests. We have two citizens on the agenda tonight, four citizens' requests. We're just gonna remind both citizens, you only have three to five minutes. At five, at the five-minute mark, I will stick time. And so please remember that not personal, but we have an aggressive agenda tonight. We have many items that we have to go through.
In 2016, I had the same concern about the lack of community and recreation opportunities available in that part of the city. The mission saw the importance of providing that type of opportunity that had been available at the Brown Wyatt. We even investigated the possibility of rehabilitating the Brown Wyatt building at the time, investing, investing our own resources to complete due diligence with a variety of experts, the findings of whom you have all been given copies of. Unfortunately, our investigation determined that the building could not be made safe for a cost-effective investment when compared with building a new facility. But the missions remained committed to providing a space for the people on that side of Broad Street. So committed in fact that we tore down our administrative offices and constructed a $4.2 million state-of-the-art facility less than 118 feet from the Brown Wyatt building. As a point of reference, that's the same distance as City Hall's front door to City Hall's fountain. The Dr. Michael and Catherine Bullock Community and Recreation Center has been a huge success. Over 1,800 citizens have become members and over 200 individuals come through the center each day to take part in the Athletics for All Ages Fellowship, Bible study, fine arts, fine art classes, fitness, academic support, and much more. All the programs at the Bullock Center and through the missions are 100% free of charge. The Bullock Center was recognized as such a fantastic investment by so many that this body even voted to give a portion of a lodging fee to the missions to help run the center in 2020. A vote the missions was very appreciative of, although the missions has not received any of those monies as a result of this vote. We are always appreciative of the local support of the city. As the Bullock Center's programs have expanded, we are constantly, constantly looking for ways to innovate and better serve our community. One, one need we have is outdoor space for athletics, outdoor instructional, fine art recitals, community festivals, and more. As we surveyed our campus, we began having conversations with other leaders in our, in our community regarding the possibility of taking the dilapidated Brown Wyatt building and demolishing it and securing it and using it, using the funds to reinvest in the community by creating outdoor space for the Bullock Center. There are several draft mockups of what this might look like and the packets we received. Contrary to misinformation currently sweeping the streets, which is most disappointing, given the mission's sterling reputation and 85-year legacy in this community and throughout the Black Belt, the missions is certainly not in it for the money. We want to provide another positive space for our children, adults, and seniors that work in synergy with the success we're having at the Bullock Center. If we move forward, after we utilize the funds available from the Brown Wyatt for demolition, the missions would begin fully funding and upkeeping the programming space as we do our current spaces. I've also been in conversations with Chairman of the Board and the YMCA, Mr. Canio Rucker. We are very open to working together. I certainly understand the love and passion some people may have in this city for that Brown Wyatt building. And there has reminded me in a current meeting, I wasn't born in someone. But one of the things I love most about this city that has accepted me for, as its home for nearly 15 years is the connection we have to our rich history. The missions will be proud to honor the history of this space and the many notable events mentioned by last week's speaker in any way we can. If you love the building that is the Brown Wyatt, I suppose there may be no way to convince you of what I'm suggesting is the best way forward. But if you love the spirit of Brown Wyatt, then let me know if the spirit of Brown Wyatt is alive and well in the Bullock Center, removing and outdated dilapidating features.
At this time, what I ask is if any council members are having questions, at this time you may address the speaker at this time, if you have any questions that you would like to make. I see Councilwoman Jamie Thomas, Councilwoman Thomas.
DJ, I looked over this, that plan that you left the body of the council. And, you know, every night it's beautiful, it's so much better and has brought so much to our city, people of our community, which, which that we have been liking for a long time. And in our community, we give back, give back so much that people can go into places where we need this in our city. And I understand what you're saying about the YMCA. I like the plan and I like the reason of what they, what y'all wanna do in, to give back to the city, which our city do need, need, I think. And when it comes to moving sale or, I'm, 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 very, very big things we have to do, yeah, but especially for in the community where it's bad.
All right, any other council members like to say anything at this time? Any other council members? All right. What, I know five minutes goes real fast, yes. What you can do, it is always good to place things in writing. If there is a specific request that you're making of the council at this time, you may place that in writing. And you also should feel free, if there's anything else you would like to add to your presentation, you can email that to us. If there's something that you have, there's, I'm not making a request.
I wanted to clear the air that the missions was not in any way looking at a money grab or doing anything that would be detrimental to the community if we serve.
Okay.
That's all.
And I believe that everyone here knows that the missions has done a lot for our city and we appreciate what's done. I know it's also based in faith, what you all do. And it's important for us to have faith. It's also great to go out and do those things that we know we should do. And that's the goal. So thank you for what you do. Let's give them a round of applause.
This is for your son. Thank you. We would like that money from 2020.
So that's your request, okay, so, yeah.
It's been a request for two years.
It's been two years, okay, so that request preceded me. So we need to check on what we need to do, because I looked over the packet and saw that there was a vote taken in 2020 to give you all half of the lodging fee. And so you all, you all wanna do half of those proceeds since 2020.
Whatever the judge and what I have to receive, we, we, to match that.
Okay. Well, we'll find out from our treasure what we need to, to arm that contract. It has not been validated and it's still in effect, I think it was for, here for two weeks. So it's still in effect, so.
Same.
So we give it forth. Okay. Appreciate it. Give them up. All right, our next speaker for the mission is Mrs. Wrenley, and she's here to also discuss Brown Wyatt restoration. Mrs. Wrenley.
Good evening, President, and hello to all of the councilmen, two councilmen. I, Appleseed M. Johnson, a senior resident, award eight, comes to replace Mrs. Wrenley, who had difficulties getting here today. So I appreciate the opportunity to come before you, not necessarily to praise, but to petition and to address. If we can recall Martin Agnew's eulogy at the demise of Julius Caesar, he very prolifically said, "I come not to praise him, but to bury him." So I come to address you on this very, very important issue to me. And I'm alone in my presence, but invisibly, there's a throng of citizens behind me. I'm a representative of the citizens, by the citizens, and for the citizens. And I come to address you on behalf of the citizens. Now, the building that the missions has so beautifully constructed, has a back, its front faces Broad Street, but its back faces my community. So when I look at that, I get a symbolic thought that even though there is a shortage that shows how involved they are, I can be, I go back to my community. And that back tells me that we as citizens, this part of Delta, the east of Broad Street, need something that is a pillar, something that is going to give us pride, something that is going to restore pride in our community. And so we come not to ask you to bury what he has said, but we come to ask you to listen to the alternative. And the alternative is this. We, the citizens, petition you to allow that building to be returned to the citizens, not for us to rely on outside sources to do the work, but for the citizens themselves to have an opportunity to be involved in the restoration and in restoring the building so that they have pride.
Johnson was my English teacher as well. She's not alone. Work to restore. I don't know why I'm sitting here. Councilman Johnson was correct. That facility was open and served citizens itself. We have through 2008, 2009. And children swimming there. The city citizens program there several other things. And most certainly, I applaud the work of the United Nations who have done in this community, not just bullets sent throughout the years. But I think if we measure the need for the people itself. Needs that we have for the people themselves. Surely can see that there's enough for everybody too. So I'm just inviting citizens to see fit at this point. Whenever they decide to do, to do the work. It does matter when you have leadership who willing to embrace the desires of the people. That does matter. And when the people spoke about it, I said, but shows nothing though. So we'll see what the end on that. I want to start with the announcement. That is. The preservation society. And there's a good announcement today. Brown chapter editors being listed in the America's seven most historic places. And that designation is has positioned. To continue the preservation work that we want to put back facility. So I wanted to dwell on Brown chapter, their efforts to preserve that portion of our history. I do know that tourism is something that we say. To the economic development and economic viability of our community. And so I don't say that all. And. The bucket truck that has come from the local, try to get it. We do need one. The financial documents may look a little strange to you, but that's because you won't have to make a payment on this truck. We choose to get it in this fiscal year. And so just know that. See the document looking the way it looks. And if you have any questions about that, please let me know. Reserve Wells is here. If you have any questions about the purchase of the trucks that he's interested in acquiring. He is interested in ULI, our funds. You know, we had to move that money to general line. And so he is interested in pushing that money for the purpose of acquiring vehicles that's needed for the cemetery departments to cover. The support services. Of course, we're trying to get that. If you have any questions about that, this is a great opportunity to ask. We don't have any questions, I'm hoping that these things that you don't have questions about will make its way to the center of general. The last meeting we had, I didn't get in, I mean, I have one thing going to the center of general. And then I took up two hours and y'all got mad because I took so long. And you say, man, I have to. But the bottom line is I hope that some of this stuff. Resolution corrections, Sarah Barnes Smith is here to discuss that. There's correction budget issues that she has got. Any questions about that, please. There's no lack to facilitate a discussion about that now. Authorization to the sub team global grant agreement. We have. You all aware that we've been receiving the team over grand, it's not this society agreement, we hope in that we'll hear. We can move forward with that. The authorization to approve the power production agreement. This is for the 4th of July weekend celebration fireworks display. That's pretty much a routine. Authorization to submit community project funding requests to the office. Conferencewoman Terrace School, this is a request we've been asked, encouraged if you will. To submit funding request, so a road front multiplex public facility project package in your package. It's something that we are advocating. And believe there's great possibility to stack and make some funding to get that down. Authorization to approve professional service agreement with civil southwest on the old Maryland junction road. Resolution when their engineering consultant letter is there from Aldott. And the agreement for professional service engineering is also included in item 12. Authorization to submit appropriations programmatic request to the offices Senator Richard Shelvin. Again, this is an estimated construction project that we are again seeking money out of Washington. With the COVID disease. Those projects, so you know what's, you're familiar with that. Hopefully these, again, these items can find a way to the consent agenda. Authorization, Sanitaris Sewer Inspection Cleaning. Also, this is the downtown resurfacing project that we're looking at. And we need to go in and do the teleback environmental inspection. On those who want to try to stabilize the underground or hopefully the resurfacing of the ground. That's what that is about. I would ask the council, is there any desire for item 15, 10% restriction of the intra departmental fund transfer? Is anyone in council that's been in our position to that before and reconsidered your position? Proven, approved to spend, no council, you know, council has any interest in reversing your vote of decision on that issue. They were certainly interested in having a discussion. The citywide camera solution. We're still advocating for what we believe we need right now. And we do have, we do know we have capacity and belief, we have a legal opportunity and right to do it the way we're proposing. I'm just wondering as a council, is there any one of the council who would like to reconsider their position on this issue? And support the position of the chief police, the IT director, the city attorney in office. This is a project we are identifying to the pin. Where every pin came from and where it was supposed to go and where it has gone. And we'll be prepared Tuesday. Friday Tuesday to give you the details of that. And I will be able to exercise the vote that is identified in the initial contract. I think it's February 12th, 2013. And in that contract, it already stipulates, you got the package. I trust you already have it, look at it, but in there explicitly states that. It's already been agreed between the YOC and the city in that contract. That if upon a majority vote of the council, that that building would then be conveyed to the city. City then hopefully will be willing to work with a group of community citizens to make that work. It's already in the agreement, it's already approved, but just one thing that needs to happen. So we will be asking, what is it, ma'am? Oh, I thought I heard you say something, I'm sorry. I just wanted to make sure I wasn't ignoring you. Okay, very good. Just one or couple more things I'd like to just kind of, one more thing to mention to you.
Yes, ma'am, ma'am.
No, I get it, thank you. Get my walk, get some steps.
Thank you, sir.
The real work, lead monitoring cabinet. Project they are doing, they provided an overview of the project, specifications for the project. It is, they provided an anticipated expense report of the project. They've also provided a donation request correspondence in the packet. And there also is attached a contract for service that we have drafted with the city. So that we could attach some deliverables to that request. That's what we need to do with all of our contracts. Am I right, this president, aren't we supposed to have some deliverables? The city's supposed to get something with public resources that we contributed, even if it was a donation. Am I, I think I'm right on that.
And that is usually revealed in scope of work.
And it's usually revealed in the scope of work, that is absolutely right. And so what I wanted to do with this, what I wanted to do with this is to put this in your hands this evening. And I would like to leave a couple of extras, I don't see, Clark, I don't see your assistant. But I'd like to leave a couple in your hand, president, or your colleagues who are not present, okay? So that they can make sure they get it. And so I'm hoping that you will attach a discretionary fund document to it. And look in your discretionary funds and see if you have something that you'd like to contribute to this effort. I'm certain we'll be contributing to it, I hope that each of you will see fit to do the same.
So for this one, you have a contract attached to it that you also would like to pass around the special.
That's right, try to get the, come on today, but it's in, it's in the, I think it's in yours. And I didn't have access to it, I tried to get one. But so that we can circulate it and once circulated, if we can do that Tuesday. And then whatever you all do, I'll put something on top of it and then we'll.
And the practice we've been doing lately with those, we pass it around and then we place it on consent agenda to vote to approve that.
That would be fine, that would be fine. The contract that's in there as well, so it will take, it will require two, well, two votes, two votes, okay, all right. All right. The final, my final thing is the attorney is going to address the SRA contract. And I'm definitely not going to try and deal with the legal aspects of it. But my, but when I looked at that agreement and it was, it was my understanding that you, President Young, you did not vote to sign it. For a perceived possible conflict. And I was reluctant to sign it originally and I decided that I would sign it. But when I finally got my hands on it and I read it, I said, well, there are some things missing. And so I had the city attorney to draft an alternative contract that does have deliverables included in a scope of work. So that we would be in a good place ethically to do the contract. Keep in mind, this contract is not with and with a person. It is with an organization that is saying that they want to do some work as it relates to economic development in our community. And so this is not asking an individual to do it. It's asking a board and that organization that this council appointed to do, to do the work. And so I work with the development office, the attorney, and those of us who are actually on the ground doing this work. And we added some line items in the scope of work that we feel are viable, feasible and doable. And so I would ask that when you hear that report from the city attorney, that you will give it favorable consideration. Council now has an option, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Mayor. All right, and I know that we, I didn't get an opportunity to get this report until playoffs, I haven't had a chance to go through it. It's some 90 pages, I think, but I tried to follow it and it was moving really, really in a good state.
And you know, that's a reflection, I think the last one, I think probably 70 something pages, I think it was 60 something. But that's a reflection of the volume of work that we are actually doing. And we are documenting it and trying to get it right. That's what we're doing, so I appreciate it.
This is proof positive that somebody's working, working, and so thank you for that. So council, I know some of you may have initial questions, but you also have a good opportunity over the weekend to review it more. Read for yourself, we all have a responsibility to do this. This is what we're up there for, is to review. And so I thank the mayor for giving us an outline of all of these items, some 21 items. And I thank him for giving us those updates, but I see your hand up, Councilwoman Thomas.
Yes, ma'am.
Go ahead.
Somebody just came across me and took the mayor there and said, I have a question for you. With this RDA contract, the mayor stated that something that you refused to sign. For one thing I want to know, who was you refused to not sign that contract?
Well, it's not anything new, councilwoman Thomas, I stated it immediately, I don't know, you, you present. I said that I had a conflict of interest, I said, because I once served on that board. And also a person that's involved now was the appointed authority that appointed me to serve on that board. So due to that, I did not sign because of a perception of a block.
Mr. President, specifically by, when that contract came across to you at the death, you saw it. Did you find any conflict or anything in there saying that the contract that came to you, but signed, even though you did have a conflict to enter, of signing? What key point that in there that wasn't corrected with that contract when it first came forth? No, we received it too tight.
Due to the fact that I am not going on it, I'm also not commenting on it, that's why I'm not going on it, because I have conflict. So if you notice about the sole proceeding, I've been cited concerning the contract.
Okay, so I just want to say to the body of council that the legislative rate, he had two contracts came before. First contract came, we were there, we have a discussion, the right to decree. Then we receive another contract. Now, I would like to say this here, if we're going to get there, I would like to, trying to give us this contract on this. I would like to have time to look over it and compare it with what we have now. Because I think it's something I'm learning. It's something I'm learning, and I would like to make sure that a few of our.
And without coming into the points of the contract or getting substantive about it. I will offer clarity for those that just may need to have that. What the mayor has produced for us now is a revised contract. And Mr. Turner, oh, this will take this issue up during your reports, we want to dwell on that. But the mayor has produced a new contract that has bullet points that he feels need to be added to. That's that contract. And as Councilwoman Thomas has stated, this council unanimously, without my vote, because I'm saying, voting to approve the contract. That contract stood out there. I, the mayor did not sign it and I did not sign it because of those reasons I stated already. So there's a contract that has already been approved by the council that awaits a signature. So before this body at this time, because we don't want to engage in any confusion or clarity. There are now two contracts. There's a contract that's already been approved and there needs to be someone able to sign that contract. And Councilman Carmichael, I believe, had, I don't know if it was in our chairs or not, but he had produced a resolution giving him the authority. To decide the contract upon a majority vote of the council. He did a resolution with that. Now, that is what, that is one issue, that's the contract that's already been approved by the council. The Councilman Carmichael is now asking that the council lower resolution to allow him to sign. All right, and now what we have is a revised contract that's been. Alright, and now, what we have is a revised contract that's been produced by the mayor, and he is asking for us to give a favorable vote, uh, for that contract. So just want to make sure everybody was on the same page, that everybody knows exactly what's going on. One contract already approved, Councilman Carmichael is asking a resolution to give him the authority to sign, it's President Proton. And then the second contract, which has been revised, and now Mayor Purvis is asking us to vote on that. That is where we are with the SRA issue. I believe I covered exactly what's going on as far as procedurally, what's happening.
Thank you, dear, great job.
I listened attentively, and there was only one point that I would add.
Okay.
Not only am I approving the contract, if voted upon, I will sign the one that I voted.
Thank you for that, okay, so that is where we are with that. Now, Councilwoman Thomas.
Yes, can I, um, I think we have, uh, an understanding, who can do contracts for us to vote on? This contract is, uh, I think I need a little bit of legal advice, uh, with this, this, this contract. Because the mayor has drawn up a contract, and he, I don't think he's ever voted to hand up and tell us that the contract that he's drawn up is going to be the only contract that, uh, he's going to sign, which I think you need to go back and see and look at, who has the authority to do contracts. The mayor does not have authority to draw a contract with, with this here, he does not, evidently, by the council. He does not have that authority.
Alright, thank you for making your point. This council will have an opportunity between now and Tuesday to review all of those documents on your own, and then you have an opportunity on Tuesday to vote your conviction on. So that's, that issue, and I don't believe we need to take up more time.
I'm just saying, you know, I, I, I know that the mayor told us, he said that he would, he would not sign the, the contract unless it's the contract that he's drawn up.
Yes, ma'am.
But the mayor has to understand that it's certainly that the mayor withdrawed contracts along with...
Well, alright, you stated that position, everyone stated. I believe now we can move on to the attorney's report, and I don't believe we need to go back to the SRA contract again.
I mean, I would presume the council, including the way, uh, totally disagree with the council.
Understood.
Just want to do that because there is no record of this being...
It's in the survey agreement.
Understood.
We disagree with the interpretation.
And that's fine, we disagree. Let's go ahead, uh, Mr. Turner.
Thank you, Mr. President, I thought I saw where the treasurer's report was on the mayor's agenda ahead of mine.
Uh, I, you should go provide it on Tuesday.
Fantastic.
Okay, so you are...
Good evening, President Young, ladies and gentlemen of the council, ladies and gentlemen of the council chamber, this, and, uh, viewing all of this, uh, in terms of this council session, work session. I have in front of you, and I, we sent this electronically, but there seemingly, seemingly still exists some electronic communications issues. So we sent this both electronically and by hard copy, you should each have a hard copy of the report as well. Uh, there are some seven items on the report. First item is Hill Hill Carter had an invoice of six thousand, seven hundred, eighty-one dollars and nine cents attached to, uh, the report as an invoice from Hill Hill Carter. I have reviewed it, as a matter of fact, working fairly closely with, uh, the attorney out of that firm, Hill Hill Carter. This was this Courtney Mormon, that, we actually have two cases being handled by that firm now, but this is a case where I believe the attorney Courtney Mormons representing Hill Hill Carter, the, as a representative of Hill Hill Carter, representing aiming as well as the city itself. Uh, I have no reason to deny a payment of the invoice. Item number two, uh, presenting for your approval, one two. Item number two is lease agreement between the city of Selma and all things of possible community development cooperation, also known as ATAP, A-T-A-P. Uh, what you should have is a red line copy of that agreement to show what changes were suggested in a discussion between buildings, director, public building director, Mr. Stephanie, Reverend John Grayson, uh, his church in ATAP, uh, and myself. The thing that I would draw your attention to, maybe first and foremost, is the change in the base rent, and I want to explain why that was reduced. That organization, ATAP, uh, due to COVID, everybody knows COVID, retapping on the economy, state line, actually. ATAP, well, while coming out of Florida, we were told it was comeback and restart, because I think it's the end of last year, beginning of this year, spent some three thousand eight hundred dollars only to be shut down again, showing that after, because of an increase in the spread of one of the various, I believe, COVID diseases. Uh, they were paying money, as a matter of fact, a lot of them paying more money than they were obligated to under the lease agreement. And now, uh, a request was made by Pastor Grayson to reduce that. He wanted, uh, uh, I, this benefit, he and I, I said that we add the reduced amount, and the council explained, I just told you that they were willing to pay money, and, uh, and some points asked to go into their own options to make, uh, the rent. So that's why the suggested, uh, lease amount was down, you can approve or disapprove of the question, ask me what, ask the benefit question, and, uh, and it now wasn't be able to, to discuss that further. But that amount was considered, it wasn't, that was New Jersey, is what I was trying to say. The other changes, as I agree, one, because I pointed out already on red line, so if you have any questions about those, I'd like to, to ask. Item number three is a somewhat unusual legal document, but covenants, as they go, in general, not that are unusual. This request is part of a covenant to a warranty deed that the city currently holds, where the city currently holds right title and interest to property that's outlined in the map attached to this covenant. You'll see, uh, at the back of that document, uh, a color map titled, "Front, parts, flash, and project boundary and site plan." Uh, this is designed to show you the area of land, the splash pad, splash pad boundary of point, consisting of point six four six acres, which the federal government says in a grant needs to have a covenant attached to the deed to run with the land such that the use of the land is restricted to the use for which the money is from the federal government or given and granted onto the city itself. That was my first time hearing of it, I spoke to, uh, both the people in, in, uh, planning and development. I got planning and development, Mr. Thompson, to put us in touch with the federal agent represented, who was asking us to do that, he did, she sent me a copy of what I believe might be attached to the paperwork as well, "Starland and Water Conservation Fund, LWC Act Regulations, Limitation of Use." This and otherwise, other words, is the result of Public Law eighty-eight dash five seventy-eight, "The Land and Water Conservation Fund Act of nineteen sixty-five is amended, counted by the fifty-four USC two thousand and three," "at set, uh, pursuant to a requirement of the law, this property may not be converted to other than public outdoor recreation uses, whether by transfer, sale, or in any other manner, without the express written approval of the Secretary of Interior, that's the most important facet of the information at this stage." So I'm ready, man, that covenant to run with the land be approved by this body to be made a matter of record in the probate court of Dallas County, Alabama. As per federal, regulate federal law. Item number four, resolution one seventy-four dash twenty-one slash twenty-two, "To establish a sixty days notice requirement or request council to waive fees for events in the city itself." I believe this was a councilwoman, Jamie Thomas, requested, uh, I happen to agree with it. I actually have some more language that I'm not going to talk about right now, I will answer any questions you have. The request basically says if anybody comes before the council to ask for a waiver fees, that they must do that for sixty days before any planned event, a minimum of sixty days, yes, ma'am?
You said, uh, that question, you just didn't say that I can't see the way with this.
No, 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 I said this resolution was suggested by you to require, to draft, for me to draft a resolution requiring individuals asking for a waiver fees to do that no less than sixty days prior to the actual, I stand corrected.
It was, uh, it was her, uh, first people.
Okay, well, I, I... But do I have a right, strange in the room, you do it, that was just...
It was a section, but this, this was not, I would, it was, my position on administrative committee was that we don't waive any.
Okay, by the way, I actually do.
You, you don't want to sixty days.
But that's what I was requesting to do, as far as, if I may, to draw on that. And I, and as I said, I actually agree with you about how quickly all the waiver fees.
But you did, but you then, you then, in response to the question that I asked you about that, that was not the question.
What was your question again?
The question was that I asked you about attorney, according to, under the, um, selected reading, the fee that you charged for the, uh, uh, court event, they said that they wanted to use this, uh, the tables and chair. If you charge a fee, I don't care what event that you charge a fee to, that you could not, uh, allow them to have.
That, that question has been asked previously, I sent another, that's not what I was referring from when I said, this resolution was the result of a request, ma'am, this was months ago, I'm talking about, I believe you're talking now about the Lafayette Day celebration and a request for tables and chairs on the city. That, that's a total separate matter, and it was my understanding that a sixty day minimum request for waiver fees was offered, and I think it was offered by Councilwoman Jamie Thomas.
Okay, so...
Uh, but, but I, I keep, I agree with you on your general position on waiver fees, I definitely...
Okay, thank you.
Uh, item number, do you want me to remove that resolution, is what I'm getting at from my reporting, when I consider...
Well, I'm sorry, I will maybe move that, since it was a request. So can you take my consensus, since, uh, no one can say who has to do it right now or remove it?
Okay.
Thank you, consider it removed, okay.
Item number five, resolution R one ninety-one dash twenty-two, twenty-one slash twenty-two, approved for recent contract. Make a notation, so I don't forget about item number four first. Approved the recent contract, item number five. Resolution to approve an agreement with the governor's local workforce areas and serious workforce LLC, in parentheses, Alabama, the recent assembly location. Whereas, City Council of South Alabama is authorized under Title eleven, what it would be, that's fifty-sixth of the Code of Alabama, nineteen seventy-five, to have the management control of the finances of the city as well as establish policies. And whereas, the city of Selma has afforded the opportunity to participate in a worksite agreement known as the Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act, in parentheses, W-I-W-H-O-A, Public Law one thirteen dash one twenty-eight. And whereas, the program is designed to provide W-I-O-A eligible participants with meaningful and worthwhile work-based learning, financial assistance, and a better understanding of the labor market. And whereas, the attached agreement required no financial expense to the city of Selma, but allows for personnel development, now therefore, we have this, uh, City Council can see Selma, Alabama, although it's valid that the city of Selma is approved to enter into this agreement and that the mayor, James Burke, he joins authorized to execute the attached agreement with the government's local workforce areas and serious workforce LLC. This resolution was, this worksite agreement was presented to me by the personnel director, uh, and...
I have a question, what exactly are we asked to do, I read the resolution, what exactly do we be doing?
Allows for the city of Selma to be a worksite location.
Okay, so would they recognize as official worksite location?
Yes, sir.
Understood.
Yes, sir, and then pursuant to the agreements attached to the...
So there, I saw what this was saying.
Say it's none, not specifically spoken with, Mr. Cook, a hundred, a couple days ago, asking if the president, I can answer any questions, his answer was, no, there's no funding required for the city of Selma. Stand to gain, not, not to spend, uh, so as the workers.
Okay, alright.
Item number six, uh, R one eighty-three, twenty-two, back to school, sales tax holiday, and I want to read this because you've done it several times, the bottom line is, it'll be, so I'll twice appear generally, the state can wait for your sales taxes, that's the time, we have to do this, uh, a minimum of thirty days ahead of the sales tax holiday, because we have to report, as you'll sure you will aware, to the state department.
Okay, thank you.
Item number eight, no, seven, I'm sorry, seven, uh, this is a contract, two of services, as between the city of Selma and the Selma redevelopment authority. Uh, what we have in front of you in the section, the section two, description is scope of services to be provided by the contractor.
I think, Mr. Turner, we discussed the SRA contract now, and, uh, we just know that there's been an addition of some deliverables to this new contract. So I don't think we need to just keep going over, we've done it already, but, go ahead, uh, do you have something? We've already talked about it.
No, I don't want to talk about it.
Okay, okay, alright, so I think we know where we are now. So, uh, was there some, another question here for the attorney while he's up?
Yeah, when you were asking me on the way this year, about this, um, I asked you.
Okay, that's fine, that's fine.
May I say, I see.
Uh, I believe, Mr. Turner knows for the questions, you may, thank you, Mr. Turner.
Thank you.
Alright, council, we're moving, let's move on now to our business items, and I saw, we got the first three.
Thank you. Good to meet you, Jack, and, uh, we have not been paid.
I contacted the Tri-County with the, the thousand and ninety dollars of the regular signs, went to the Turk's office, to look for a contract, see where it was paid, where it would be paid from, uh, the, the minutes, does not say where it would be paid from, and is there a contract?
That's, so we need, uh, because we need to say we need to cover all the funds that we're going to use to pay. Did they invoice us, or should we have...
I finally got a copy, she emailed me a copy this week.
I know.
She, she emailed me a copy this week, the, uh, office manager, the person that I spoke with in Tri-County, she emailed me a copy of the invoice this week. Uh, can I make a suggestion for you guys, do contracts? In order for us to keep on task, if you are contracted with somebody, contact somebody in public works or someone to let them know that this is being done, so, and also let the, let the contractor contact them, they're out doing the work. And then when it's done, contact public works or whoever, so they can sign up on the job, and then we'll get, you know, we'll be able to process the invoice in time for that. Because no one knows what's going on yet, and we don't know what's going on.
That sounds like a day-to-day operation. And so if we can have, uh, the mayor look at that, and when we know that the contract is going to approved, uh, by the council, uh, because that sounds like, if, if the mayor can assign someone that will look at that work, I think that'll help that move faster, because we don't want to start, we're going back and forth with, you know, and try to step in somebody else's work. And so I think it's a great suggestion, what you're doing, that think of extra guy paying, and efficient, that sounds very efficient.
It's very similar to the process that we in City Hall must follow.
So if, uh, we could have the mayor look at that... So if, uh, we could have the mayor look at that and get back with us, what do you like to me? Think what happened?
There's both you already employed, uh, someone close to you.
Do we have it, we have it in writing?
We have it in writing.
We do have that right?
Right, it's simply contract.
Okay.
We just ain't going with what they say. You wanna go behind.
And check.
And check even to the council, you know, or if you got signed, move contract across. We supposed to be, we're gonna make sure it work for them. You know, we have a situation where Sam said that he did not order us to work to get going, still wants more. There are other big conflicts now that we've worked out.
Well, we're gonna have the, uh, the court pool events and provide us with whatever that procedure is so that all of us can be aware of it. Because we're not getting the council to six, bring a new council. So some of us are not aware of it. And so, uh, if that's the case, then we could, I think, won't come up with situations like this. Is that answered?
Yeah.
Any questions?
Was there something that the engineer, um, could have approved and, um, get signed off on?
I, I, I'm not sure. I'm, I'm, I'm just gonna, um, it seems to me, and I'm, I'm gonna use the word sober word because I'm in here, I can't think, I can't say. We get the contract approved, then to me, we need to make that handoff. Because now you're talking about execution of the contract or fulfilling the terms of the contract. It really doesn't have anything to do with the legislative body. There needs to be a procedure, either when that contract is approved and what order is assigned. And since we're talking public works, either it needs to be in writing that public works is going to contact the contractor and schedule the work, which to me makes more sense than the contractor trying to run down public works. It seems to me that the head of public works needs to, that's, that's the goal. And the tail doesn't need to be wag wagging the dollar. I think Mr. Gates needs to say, I've got the approved contract, and I'd like to do the work, and then we're out of.
Somebody, somebody needs to contact somebody and let the work is being started.
Okay, okay. Well, let me, let me offer something here, okay? We're talking procedure, and, um, there's, uh, not complete clarity on the procedure. So without getting into a long session on that, what we need to is address the issue that's present for us. And that's to get Tri County paid. And may I simplify, but I'm just trying to get to take care of the present invoice. So Madam Treasure, can you instruct this council as to exactly what this council, step by step, needs to do right now to get this vendor paid?
Okay, did anyone inspect the work to make sure it was done? Okay, I need someone to sign up on the invoice. My question to you, to, to, uh. How many? What, what area was this Tri County, this working?
War two, I think. I think it was, yeah, I don't know. I think it's the river's war.
It was, is this now a war two?
It wasn't war two.
It was at the Marine.
And what, and what year?
I think it was last two. I think it was last.
All right, let, let the mayor, then we're gonna try.
I can, I can, if you, if you recall, if you recall, uh, Christmas celebration, uh, where we had the hope so we were, uh, doing Christmas celebration. That was the expedited process to get the amount of the river dredge so that, so that we could get those boats in, that work. That's what this is about. Well.
That's okay.
They, they, and so it really was managed by the engineer. What happened with the drop on this on that shoe? Uh, but it's, it's, it's clear as, as it relates to, uh, council, I'm not, I'm not here to take the fight, but you all know I don't agree with the council even uh, negotiating contracts. You, you know what I'm saying? I think that's, if, if we were to back this train all the way up to there, then, then it probably wouldn't have this issue. But, but, but councilman, uh, R B, you are correct. Once the terms, uh, done, you all vote on it. Uh, you hand it all to us, but you can't tell us how fast we can get it done because we have to consider allocation of resources.
Okay, so now, Madam Treasure, you were giving us exactly what we need to do. First item you said was, find out this business thing. Okay, uh, what's the next thing?
The next thing then, then, since, since you guys, sort of like, you missed some, several steps here. You didn't allocate or notate where you want it paid from.
So we need to allocate the funding source.
Yes.
Okay, so I'm going to go out there on a limb and probably think that when we did that, we were calling it unappropriated at the time. Something in which you corrected us as treasurer. So we probably got it from the unappropriated account, which we know does not exist. So now we know that that's budget surplus. And so now, I am thinking, and we know if I'm wrong, that, um, since that was the original intention, was to take it from budget surplus, we just didn't double call it that. Then we now get this amount and allocate it to come from budget surplus and give it an account number.
Yes.
So you will, so as treasurer, can you draw something up in which we can take that from the budget surplus and give us the correct account number?
Now, I'm gonna step. Hold on a second. I will look at the budget and see where it can come from, but, um, it's gonna be tied.
So you're now gonna take it from the surplus?
Well, the surplus has to be budgeted, um, as far as looking.
You're the treasurer.
Yeah, I'm the treasurer.
Find where you think it can come out from and make sure it's legal effort only more, and, uh, we'll take care of it from there. So we'll leave that to you to present something to us, uh, to vote on on Tuesday, so we can get that done. Councilwoman Kristi Thomas.
Madam Treasure, you made a comment that, that it's gonna be tight. What is the balance in budget surplus?
Well.
Thank you, Councilwoman Kristi Thomas.
At this point in time, our budget surplus, our budget surplus is two point six million. Have you sent us to report yet for this month was the, okay, you know, man, if you would have it on Tuesday? Tuesday, okay.
All right, so you're not, so, and, and I think you do probably need a minute, you know, tomorrow to look at this. Right now, you're not wanting us to take it out of the budget surplus. You're gonna try to find it somewhere else. Is that what you're saying?
I would prefer that we look for it in another year.
Okay.
If I have the amount of the annual, something, excuse me, seven thousand, um.
Seven thousand dollars. Okay, well, we'll just wait to hear back from you, Madam Treasure. On where you think it's best to come from. But our objective here is to get that paid as soon as possible. Is if anything else, because right now I'm saying, find out if it's been expected. And then allocate the proper funding source. You want to get back with us on the, uh, where are we gonna get that funding source from? And what we can vote, is anything else that needs. So on Tuesday, we hope to have this taken care of. If you get that to me, uh, in time, I'll get it placed on consent. If you get that to me in time, so that we can get this behind us. All right, Councilwoman Thomas. Yes, ma'am.
I don't know my full, yeah, so like, I would just talk.
But this may now obviously get us.
Time, but that's what we go on the.
Okay.
Plan probably, because I, I, I mean, this has been one paid.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. Okay, well, council, my heartland, I have it, so let's, did that hit completely? Go ahead, Councilwoman Harvey.
I really don't remember. Somebody gave me. Why did I put gas that's on?
Was that to get your land fair, that land fair job paid for? Okay.
One that you paid out of the gas, that, uh, you want that to be paid out of the gas tax fund, and you can put down the, 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 my life is great, but there's no funding budget if you have all of them.
Take care of it.
So can you give us the verbiage? I see the council secretary's hand up, and I know she had been working on this as well. Madam Secretary, you have something to add, because I know we've been talking about.
Y'all need to get how much is in that account, that account is being used by public. So you need to know how much is in that account. I think you all have a divided one until you're using, you all will be divided.
Okay, did you get that, Madam Treasure? Okay, so can we get that information as well? I think you said, Madam Secretary, you need to find out exactly how much is in that account because public works has been using that account. And then once we know how much is in there, then it should be divided by ten, correct?
Yes, and we all do it in a way that we don't speak.
It's divided even.
Well, I mean, they got, hold on, what is that? Obviously, the, that's a fund that's usually not divided by council. They definitely tax fund, because right now, that fund is basically just what the street residents.
Can I say?
Madam Secretary, are you talking about oilies or gas?
Gas.
Gas.
There's a, we're only gonna get that. You know, you went out and had the conversation and, 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 and the conversation was there was no money, the money budgeting for that, and I asked you, maybe add on this. It's, it's how much is in the, the work. It means, so, it's, we can get the eleven, oh, that's what, on the dock.
Eleven funds.
Have eleven funds divided by the council. The oil trust fund is divided by the council. I may, I may have misunderstood what I can mean.
Okay.
So he can't go again and use that eleven fund where that profit is, is they don't have to buy.
Correct, but I just make sure there is money done in this, in the.
Okay, so we still need to find out how much is in that account. Okay, and then once we find out exactly how much is in that account, then we need to create a budget by.
Yes, uh, amend the budget. We already have a line.
There, getting you up in the budget, put the money there.
Can you give that verbiage to me so that, because I want to make sure we give it right, someone can come back and do it again. Okay, I hear you know that, you know, it's one of the times I was trying to.
But I'm trying to share with you what that money, that two eighty-five, the folks we use for, we need trying to use. The two eighty-five, what we don't divide, that is, that is. You remember you just took the last, a last report, we had two hundred and eighty-five dollars there. Uh, we use that for, when we got, like, he got a project and he needs to take care of the four, forty-three thousand, which one do you use for?
Forty-six.
Forty.
Forty-six.
Forty-six thousand. That's two hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars tax for infrastructure that we use that for. That's what we normally use that money for when you, when a, when a project needs to be done. That's what we use it out of that account, the two hundred and eighty-five. It's not split, it's two eighty-five dollars.
That's not contrary to what you're saying, though, is it?
But the, the funding level, gas, state gas tax fund is what he's trying to use, funding level. That's where I'm looking for the money. The other money, the oil lease money, that's the money that is split among all the council members. Not the two hundred and eighty-five, not the two hundred and eighty-five thousand, you don't split there.
That's what I was saying, that's what she's depending that, you know, if that might.
She's in agreement with you.
Right.
Y'all understand?
Yeah, see, that's why I was saying that he can, he can use that out of there. That's what we're talking about.
Yeah, that's what we're doing. All right, so, Madam, uh, Treasure, um, so that we can get that land fair project paid for, uh, that too, uh, can go on. Uh, could you please email the mayor, myself, and Councilman Harvey, since it's his issue? And, um, if you can get back to us, we'll get the consent as well. Uh, the precise, exact verbiage, because I don't want us to keep coming back over this one word again. So I want you to have something in place so that you all can go ahead and start the process. Whatever we need to do, let's do it. Thank you. All right, uh, Councilwoman Harvey, what else?
Yes, there was a, a revenue project, I think, on my, we see it's my tenure. It was my understanding. It's out, yeah, all the bids are coming in, and I actually thought. Uh, that is, I was taking a drive.
If it just, if it was the express game, it's about to the project, but, uh, okay, I'm not sure.
And also I think send these to, uh, Mr. Gates, uh, that's, and we'll, so please express the council's readings regarding his, um, process. All right, uh, Councilman Jefferson, the main council.
We go back, uh. And what, if you need a contract on it, uh, was it one?
On track him, did? I don't know.
There is not a contract. It didn't mention that one yet.
But you need a contract?
I really don't remember. I almost today.
It's been so much since around, around, and they just called me.
But at this point, the work's been done. So I'm saying contract, but we got an invoice for it. The work has been done, and so, uh, you know, and turn the matters to go back and forth. Some people say they voice these contracts.
And so. And, and I was going to say that it probably is moot at this point.
Exactly, it's moot.
That the work's already been done.
Counselors, but we do know that it's been done.
And normally, of course, you would want.
You would, in all courses, you would want, but in this situation, we need to get.
And I understand there was something of an emergency.
Hey, because we're gonna need that vendor again for other things. And so in order to keep the other business with us, we got to.
See the bill, is what I suggest.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, the West savings was a theme, it was a theme job, and I think, I think when Valmont was working on that.
Yeah, yeah, I think you're right on that. I just have to go back here. We got a lot, we got a lot of projects.
All right, Councilwoman Thomas, did you have something to add?
Yeah, I need to know this for the record, they have forty-three, forty-six thousand. So it's gonna follow upon the public work. There's gonna be a public work. In my mind.
Thank you, Zell, on that.
Is that, is it, that's why I'm asking you now, because, uh, we already had, we voted on it.
Yeah.
And by now, do you know if this is gonna be a, is gonna follow upon a public work project?
Does it change?
Because you know, of course, take that. So is public, is, is this going upon a public work project?
Public work, you know, it, that's what's picking, so it's not the issue. It's not the issue unless there's some.
No, I'm not asking about the issue. I'm asking for the record, when you, we are, he's doing a forty-six thousand dollar contract. And it has to follow up on the, what is he, he's not doing a, he's not doing a, it's gonna follow up on the public work. But that's, that's the question we need to know that, if it's being recorded. And he's doing forty-six thousand, and it's gonna have to follow, it's not following on some. It's gonna follow on the work, and not be, it's a public work project. That's how I want to make sure, you know.
You just want to put that on record.
It's gotta be on the record, when you spend forty-five.
I think no one is in disagreement with that, and so it's, uh, on the record. All right, thank you, Councilwoman Harvey. Now we move on next, uh, I see Councilman Randolph, we'll move on to the next three items. And open your eyes, Councilwoman Jane Thomas.
Okay. Um, I have been willing, uh, I have been asked for a follow-up. It's been, it's been several months now that I requested, um, you know, this council voting for about me, because we still in the process of voting for, for me. And the reason why I asked that, I'm wanting to compare something, I mean, and, and, and show you why, once I would see the report, uh. It's very important, we, uh, city government be here and, uh, we have purchased, uh, I don't know how many, uh, possibly, how many vehicles that we have purchased in this, in this period of this administration. And also, you know, we were finding in the, in the, the last, uh, state, the state example with the gas, uh, the use of the gas in the vehicle, where. with the gas, uh, the use of the gas in the vehicles, where we had some people were taking advantage of the city vehicle with the, uh, gas. And also, I had got a report where I was looking at, and I wanted to compare. I can't compare today, I don't know what I own give to you. Even though we have not even had any meeting, my councilor not had, we did this year, uh, last year, because I was on that committee. And, uh, it's very important when it comes to city property, uh, of the use of city property. That's why we have policies in place. And, um, I, I can't do what I need to do to get the information out of there. And we need to have a, a committee to.
A what committee is that?
The committees are, you checkers.
Oh, what's on there?
Do you know?
I, I, all I know is, uh, heavy equipment. Uh, for now, one, one.
Heavy equipment?
Yeah, that's wrong, or heavy equipment.
We don't have a committee just for heavy equipment.
That's the one that, that's wrong.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, uh, so you're making a request, uh, to have this list, uh, of the vehicles, uh, all the vehicles that the city had.
Yeah, I asked several months ago.
Yes, ma'am. Who is responsible for providing that information?
The clerks, the clerks, yeah, the clerks.
Well, the clerk is not present with us right now. So perhaps on Tuesday, in her presence.
Okay.
Uh, you should, uh, make that.
Okay, I'll be following.
Again, okay. And, uh, also, um, and I guess she could be the one to answer that too. Uh, do all of the city vehicles have to have a license plate?
Yes.
So do all of them, we need to make sure that all of them.
They have to seal.
They have to seal and have a license plate. So maybe we can ask her that as well, and stay as well. Proceed to the next item, please.
Okay, my next is, uh, I wanted to talk about, uh, the reason why I asked about it. I've paid, I have people worried about. Opportunity.
Opportunity zone.
Yes, let me, let me, let me explain something to you. The reason why I've been doing this research on, our life club, like our city itself. I know that everybody in every ward, uh, there's some things that, that, uh, we all need, uh, I may go to real name. The real name. And, uh, I've been doing a lot of research on it. And I have been, uh, where people have been interested in, uh, I want the council to think about this. Uh, maybe, uh, several, uh, this because it could help us a lot. It could help this city a lot, uh, get some of its, uh, family houses, uh, uh, areas that are run down, burned down, how people have been looking, been coming into, to, into our areas. And I want several to able to get, uh, I would ask the mayor, have you ever thought about it, maybe? I asked the mayor, have he ever, uh, made it, tell me? Opportunity zone. Most cities does it because of the condition. It, it, it is nothing new, all, everybody know that.
Opportunity zones, uh, established cannot be changed risklessly. The building, risk, risk, and, and, actually, when the opportunity zones were formulated, the city itself, that was done before this, I, I took office, before I took office, uh, the opportunity zone runs along the, uh, east side of the river, uh, east side of Water Avenue, all the way down through, uh, uh, to the bypass. And then comes down the bypass, comes all the way over the second avenue. We do have an opportunity zone. That one, it can't, we can't, locally, we cannot change. And there's, there's nothing that we can change. I'm thinking that happens, the, 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 the government decides to change parameters. Uh, if that happens, then the governor will be the person that would have, or just, I believe, I think, no matter.
That's correct.
And also, also, if we have investors that come into the city, like my area, I would, I would usually say.
If your area is not in the opportunity zone, uh, and, and, uh, investors are purchasing property in our opportunity zone.
And that's what I'm asking you, uh, to make. What I'm trying to do is to make that area, this is, you know, this is the testing area, you know, where we have streets out there, okay? That investors are, it, it up interest in coming in there, uh, wanting to buy a site. Let me have those burnt houses we got down in our neighborhood.
We're, we're gonna, we're gonna present to the council, the, the, not to this future, uh, paperwork to set up a land bank. Land bank is kind of set up, you know, uh, the city, uh, opportunity to clear title. These properties, these properties really don't have clear titles to, and it's difficult for investors to actually take access to the property. And so we're looking at that, we say that, that will be something, recently, even in the past two years, changed its parameters for land banks, uh, and lower, uh, the threshold, uh, to a place where someone can be it. And so we are actually putting together documents right now, uh, to take a look at that, to make that work for us, uh, in the, so, uh, I need to know something.
Yeah.
You didn't keep it in my window or something?
No, no, I, this, I told you.
We are, we are working on it.
No, what I was worried about, um, I know that they do it, because I've been doing some recent research. And, and the area that's in my ward, I look at, and I also went on the map, and I, I, I've got the, the addresses of the homes, what belongs to the state, what belongs to, to one that paying tax. Or once they get burnt down, for many years, nobody have done it, but somebody else is interested. If, if he's interested in coming over there in that area and buying that property, that no hood.
Be glad it's us. We'll be glad it's us.
And that's what I'm saying. And, and, and that's what I want to do, to make, I want to work on that, because it's very important when you got two people staying on the street, and you got everything else is, is burnt and gone.
I totally agree with you, unfortunately, you know, it's done like that quite a while. Well, I, I, I agree with you. We talked about it before, and, and, uh, we were in a position at that point to start building. Uh, we're now back to where we were then, got another three hundred, we got there, to be talking that. And we are doing all the paperwork right, or we should let the city, uh, get sued.
Okay.
Because see, you can have a house that had burned out, and then we go in there and tear it down. And we can get sued, and somebody might just pay.
We have to, well, you gotta, you gotta get it done right, but we're going through that process.
And my last one, my last one is, when I say, I talked to y'all about the book, about, uh, projects in Ward City. Uh, it, uh, it makes me drive very hard with my constituents, especially my disabled constituents. Uh, call me, and they call the city, especially when they hang here. Uh, a camp window, the disabled bus company get them, and they're driving, uh, full of water every time it raining. It, it's hard on them. And, uh, Ms. White called me, and she said, uh, Ms. Thomas, uh, have you, uh, the name came out? And I said, get back with you. I said, Ms. White, I'm here, I've been looking. I said, we got five, we not the only one got this issue. I have three families that have nowhere for water to go. And one of them is this age. So I remember that, uh, I asked you, we are paying William Scott. We have a contract with William Scott. He told us when he first came in there, he said there is over ten million dollars, I think. If we came up with the, with the projects, that he can move on. So I'm holding William Scott to, when he came to this body of, I don't know, because I didn't have, I didn't have five million. Project. And, and these people are, are, are serious, they, they, they constantly, and I don't have the money to, if I had money, I would fix that problem for them. But since he told us there, there are ten million dollars back there, if he sees a project, William Scott can come and afford this, if they invite, and, and here for us.
This is not the way to respond to the, uh, the, uh, problem that we have with this drainage, uh, a multifaceted. One of them has to do with the kind of soil we have. That prior soil, it, uh, it's like a sponge. The, it, it holds that water, draining slowly, really. The reason I decided, because I wasn't gonna respond, but let me tell you why I'm responding to you. Because we are predicted to get another major rainbow tomorrow. And, uh, we got no, we really got nowhere for this water to go, folks. I'm just, the, and, uh, my wife got rollercoats from the rains like that, and she, she put her, she's on a walkout in the house, too. I have the same problem here, plenty of us got me. Just, there's several issues that, that, I, I, I asked code enforcement the other day, don't mention code things, because I saw a contractor, a lawn contractor, uh, blowing leaves and grass into the street as they clean, uh, someone's property. And that, those leaves and grass ends up in the trench, and they end up in the drainage dish, and they clog the drainage dish. That there are just some bad behavior that we got, that we just really need to stop. Now, now, the other issue that we got is, one person speaking time, and the other issue that we got is that our ditches really have not been cleaned in several years, several years. And there are trees in there, and tires in there, and, and grocery baskets in there, and beefer dams in there. And we are, and, and the guys, even though we have been here eighteen, nineteen months, folks, remember, we just started getting the equipment three or four months. And we are now out there cleaning these ditches out and getting this work done. And we really are, those guys are working really hard to try to get this done. But that's not, I, I just, I'm, I, I stood up to ask the public, I'm looking at the camera. I'm asking, I feel a little patient, because this work has not been done in a long time. And we are really working hard to try to get this done. So it's not, uh, Councilwoman Thomas, it's not that we don't care, it's not that people are not working. It's just a lot of work to do. And I'm gonna say this is undone.
Thank you.
It's hard. No, it's impossible to hire people to cut grass for nine dollars an hour. When, when McDonald's paying for twelve or fifteen to, to do what they do, or all are paying fifteen, and you're working in that condition. It's, you know, it's a problem. We, we are working on the pay plan, we, we, I got that, I think it come back to you. It's gonna be a, a, a high hurdle for us to jump. But we need to increase pay for all our folks, we really do. We cannot, we can't, we can't have youth, and our summer youth program for nine dollars an hour.
Thank you, ma'am.
You just don't.
Let's speak to.
I, I know, but I'm just, I appreciate, I appreciate. I'm just saying, these are the issues, these are the issues, and these are things, these are things that the council can help with.
Okay, yes. All right, let's speak to issues that are determined, so you can go. And I agree with what you're saying, unless they force. Go ahead, Councilman Thomas, you're, this is your last.
Can you, can you, I'm, I'm requesting that, uh.
We have Mr. Scott come before the council.
Yes, Mr. Scott told us, and, and I've been, been doing, uh, research, and I want Mr. Scott to, uh, probably grant.
Okay.
That area, because there is no storm right.
Okay, we will respond to you. Yes, we'll ask Mr. Scott to come and allow, uh, questions and forty percent, we can do that. I don't know when, but we're getting on the schedule, okay? Is that answered that question?
Yes, that is my first time asking.
I don't remember the first, but, uh, if it's, if I remember, I'll give it to you. Thank you. I think those include your items.
Yeah.
Uh, council, uh, the items I had, I was updating on business items from April seventh, twenty twenty-two work session. Looking forward to that May ninth date to receive the litigation report from the attorney. Looking forward to that date, uh, so that we can find out what case to be at maybe. Uh, so to Treasury today, uh, she's going to give us that information, uh, concerning the city area. We know that's coming up. We also know that we have to reschedule several of our committees. We'll get those rescheduled in the next two to three weeks. Uh, that includes the revenue committee, and also the someone's made review board. Uh, committee will get those scheduled, uh, in the near future. I think those are the major updates from that April seventh, twenty twenty-two work session. Now move on to my next item, which is the fee waiver. I think everyone remembers that Ms. Johnson came before the council, uh, representing Michael Johnson Foundation, and they were, they had an activity, like the wife said, and were requesting a, uh, vendor, uh, fee waiver. And remember, there was some discussion about, uh, the products, what, uh, they were asked to pay. But the issue that she presented for us at that request was a request for a fee waiver. I think all of you all remember that. Uh, if you have any questions about that, you can ask it, and I'll bet it for Tuesday. But we hope to take some action on that request for vendor fee waiver. Uh, another download on that on, uh, Tuesday. Now we're gonna go to committee reports. Uh, are there any committees that would like to provide a report at this time? If you do, uh, if you'd like to share, you may share, any committees.
I'd like to. I'd like to get a counsel. I've been counting weeks.
Right, what man?
I'd like to get a counsel on something, fifty-five.
Okay, is it, oh, that's for.
I'm probably on my.
Okay.
I'd like to get a counsel. I've counted weeks, uh, we received, uh, uh, payment from, by, by the elevator. It had on there for six to eight weeks, uh, for, uh, equipment, uh, by, I think it ended with a seven week. Are we in a seven week? Okay, because many people be in a seven week. It's a seven week period. I know I had to count the weeks, so, it, uh, in, in my, my concern is, is, uh, we know what the, it's been a year already. And, uh, I just wanna know, uh, are we gonna be, be profitable? I counted, I counted, they said from six to eight, they said before, it should be, uh, our company. So we still gonna be dealing with the same people right now, so, but you know, we are. And Mr. President, I would like for us to, if, uh, those other, if you want to come to county, come to, to, to there. I think that we need to make a, a recommendation, uh, to move the council meetings on way there. Uh, right now, uh, they, uh, is really act, uh, by the elevator they down, uh, we got operating right.
Yes, ma'am. But take that, I realize that, all right, thank you.
I'm just reading the email that was forwarded, elevator guy. And my phone doesn't say anybody's parent, it's just. But it does say, once we've received and applied your forty percent down payment of sixty thousand dollars, blah, blah, blah. Have we paid them? Sixty, fifty-nine thousand, nine hundred sixty-eight dollars?
Has the council agreed, say that, or, or, maybe?
I know we agreed, have we?
We all, we all had that one, say.
Yeah, I had it.
Yeah.
Okay.
What did you get that?
Uh, this was forwarded, um, the twenty-sixth.
I don't think I have, I, I, I found that one. He will, it will pay, this, or he went over it, stepped from beginning to end where they are now.
Do we know, do we just, and I'm just looking for, uh. Do we know, do we just, and I'm just looking for, uh, you did, you paid it, you remember?
We voted on it when she had told us.
It's been a while.
It's been a while.
And, and the reason I'm asking that, it, it, it hit me and I met myself with that when I read this. You, we pay that, this, this explanation back me. And I, and I'm not looking at anybody. I'm just saying, it is, it's, it's unacceptable.
I have, I, you know, I, I, you know, I, I said in the last meeting, I was insisting that the senior attorney asked if we made a damage, we did just that, every contract we do from now on. Because really what's happening is, uh, performance is a problem because folk can't hire folk. They haven't, they kept, they have a supply chain issue, but their problem is becoming our problem. And we just, I just, my thing is just, we're going to put the liquidated damage provision in there. They may not want to sign the contract, but let's get somebody else who will it, to do it. Our numbers may go up on the basis because that's an additional risk, but I say we need to do that. And that's why I'm struck by city attorney, you know. We all have a little liquidated damage provision to the contract. And, 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 and as far as I'm concerned, I, I, I'm frustrated about that elevator situation. And anybody else, as far as I'm concerned, I, I can go to council contract, we give them the money, they need it, you know, that's.
All right, thank you for that. Now, uh, that concludes all of the items on our agenda, uh, for the evening. Uh, council, we do have a meeting on Tuesday. Uh, and so let's remember that we have a honor system. We only take up those items which were discussed in this work session, so that we can be effective and efficient on Tuesday. Let's only take up those items. Uh, we hope to get a lot of these items under consent. Go ahead.
What you consider as old and new business, uh, we're not going to, my old business. Because it was, it was eighty years old, so I was long, um, I'm trying to finish it before. And I was trying to follow along with the mayor, what the city, I mean, you could finish up that old business, because I'm not that good. So when you said an old and new business, and that's what I was, when I asked you about, that's why I mean by old business.
It would be great if that old business is talked about here on Thursday, on Thursday. So that when it comes up on Tuesday, it's not shocking everybody, and we're going down the rap, oh, that we haven't even, that some of us knew.
Okay, okay, let's go. Good, okay. Now, everybody knows, come Tuesday, they got something to talk about tonight, because I am on the radio. So I'm sure that we know we good now, I'm good in it.
Okay, okay.
Now, well, we good that you just explained old and new business.
What we're trying to do is, we're trying to be efficient. And so when we talk about this at work session, you have a two-hour, three-hour work session, then your council meeting doesn't happen for three hours. Uh, because we get an opportunity to discuss, and that way everybody, all of us are on the same page on Tuesday. Because when you bring up something that nobody has ever talked about before, then you create a little confusion. We're just trying to keep the confusion out and bring some harmony. And so when we're in harmony, everybody knows what we're talking about. And so that's, that's all I'm trying to do. All right? Now, we do want to say, there might be an emergency situation that pops up between that and Tuesday that we didn't talk about. I'm like, I'm embarrassed with emergency. So if this is an emergency, oh, oh, if this is an emergency, we'll take it up. But let's just try to stick to the script. All right, with that said, that was me going over it. With that said, if there be no other business, thank the council for this. Let me say it to the attorney.